We might wait for a few minutes because we have some people having trouble with being around our city, I think. Probably a train. Yeah, I think I... Who is on? Can you say? It's hard to hear right now for us to...
This is Carl Vaughn.
Oh, Carl's on? Okay.
This is Carl Vaughn.
Patrick?
And Patrick Dix is on.
Okay, we got you both on. One from Scotland and one from somewhere else. Where are you?
Fargo.
Oh, that's an exciting place.
I want to be where Carl is.
Okay. Do we want to give a few more minutes if they're on their way?
I think we start.
Okay.
They're all fine and they're all in here, so.
Okay, I will... I guess we will call this meeting to order, a joint meeting between the school district and Des Moines City Council. And Laura is here to take the role.
Bowleson?
Here.
Simonson?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Coleman? Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gardo?
Here.
We are performed.
Yes, right.
Alonzo Diaz?
Here.
Knotts? Scampus? Mr. Mayberry Hayes?
Here.
Ms. Marterano? Mr. Dix?
Here.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to welcome you all to this joint meeting between the city of Des Moines and the Des Moines Public Schools. I want to begin to express my gratitude to the school district for their ongoing partnership and collaboration with the city. The longevity of a strong and rich community depends on the quality of city life and services, as well as exceptional educational opportunities for our families. And together, we can continue to make Des Moines one of the best cities to raise a family. The tradition of collaboration between our two organizations is more important than ever. We understand that the decisions and commitments we make as a city can have influence on the operation of the Des Moines Public School District. Whether it's investing in our neighborhood revitalization to provide healthy and safe housing opportunities, or investing into programs and resources that bolster your education initiatives, the city of Des Moines will do what we can to ensure that our youth have the opportunity to live in a safe and thriving community. We know that we share in the struggle to produce balanced budgets while trying to maintain the quality and level of our services. And we are entering in a time of budgetary uncertainty alongside you. And that is why it is more important than ever to understand each other's issues and what impact it will have on our citizens. The future does remain bright for both our organizations, and I am excited to share with you in our shared constituencies the benefit of our collaboration. And tonight, we will cover topics central to the concerns of our families, including opportunities for recreation, early learning, library services, neighborhood revitalization, and efforts to reimagine education. As a former school board member and now the mayor of Des Moines, I am very thankful for this opportunity to meet, to discuss our shared futures. And I, along with the rest of the council, look forward to years of continued partnership to enhance Des Moines. And I will turn that over now to Jackie Norris, the president of the school board.
Thanks, Mayor Bowleson. I'm Jackie Norris. I'm the chair, and it's an honor to speak on behalf of all of my board colleagues, vice chair, Ms. Alonso Diaz, as well as our superintendent, Dr. Roberts. First, I want to make sure that everybody knows how amazing Des Moines Public Schools is. And our job each and every day is to prepare our students for the 21st century. Over 30,000 young people walk through our doors each and every day, and they speak over 100 languages and represent 88 countries. To give you a sense of our diverse learners, we serve 24% are English language learners, 15% are receiving special education services, and 75% qualify for free and reduced lunch. 21% of our students identify as African-American, 31 identifying as Latino, 8% Asian, and 32% Caucasian. I think it's really important to share that our diversity is not just a statistic. For Des Moines Public Schools, it's not a challenge, it's actually an opportunity. And it's our superpower if we can harness our diversity, because it enriches every aspect of our learning environment. And it fosters an environment where our young people are prepared to be global citizens each and every day. We're proud of our programming. We are the only public Montessori program in the state, and next year, we are growing Montessori programming and offering it in two additional elementary schools. We've got Central Campus, which is providing best-in-class training for our students to prepare for career pathways. And in just the past two months, maybe you've heard about the great success of Hoover. They have made it to the finals in 3A soccer just recently, and Jessica Kind from Hoover set a new state meet record. And we've also got great things happening at North with the NASA App Challenge and the Team Frostbite. And then also, our prowess in speech and debate is being recognized because we're hosting the National Speech and Debate Conference. And I could go on and on, but that's just four things that are really top of mind and really recent. One of the things that I think is really important as we're here today is our students, our teachers, and our staff all love Des Moines Public Schools. And we want them to live, work, and play in the city of Des Moines. And that is something that I think is really important for all of us and something that we all hold in common. The one thing I would like to share is that while there are wonderful things happening, there are a lot of headwinds that Des Moines Public Schools face. And that's why this meeting is so important, to make sure that everybody understands the headwinds that we face in much the same way that you have headwinds as well. Just a few I'll quickly mention. Supplemental state aid has not currently kept up adequately with inflation, and that is a problem as we look at our salary and benefits. We are seeing declining enrollment for a variety of reasons, and some of our facilities are underutilized. In the next two to three years, the thing that we're most excited about and we're going to talk about is reimagining education. You're going to hear a lot about this, but we actually have to reimagine our education system to make sure we're prepared for 21st century learners, and that is an opportunity. We also will be talking about spending authority. I know you have an equivalent as it relates to property taxes, but we have to anticipate that every year, we're probably going to need to cut $10 million at a minimum. And then the other two things we're going to be relentless on is continuing to focus on student outcomes and advocating for preschool. And then finally, we want to make sure to let our legislators know that we need appropriate and adequate funding to support all of our diverse learners. So that's a little bit of a quick best hits for DMPS, and I'm really looking forward to the conversation. And I'm really lucky to have you, Mayor Bowleson, to partner with, and both our school board members and our city council members that are willing to come together and work together. So thanks.
I think, too, it would be good to have each one of our council and school board members to introduce yourself and what area you cover, just so everybody gets to know each other, and not that everybody doesn't already, but if you want to start.
Sure. I'm Councilman Joe Gatto. I represent Ward Four, which is the south side and the east side. I'm a graduate of Lincoln High School in 1985.
I'm Linda Westergaard, and I represent Ward Two, which is the north and the east side of Des Moines. And I graduated from North High in 1970. And my children all attended Des Moines Public Schools.
Mike Simonson. I'm an at-large member on city council. I'm the most recent city council member effective in March. And I'll just make mention that when I campaigned, I had 74 different gatherings, and without exception, public schools came up in conversations specifically, what can the city of Des Moines do to help with whatever the school might need?
Josh Mandelbaum. I'm the Ward Three council member, the southwest, west and southwest part of Des Moines. I'm a Roosevelt High School graduate and a parent of two Greenwood woodchucks.
I'm Chris Coleman. Just got on the council shortly before Mike, although I was able to serve earlier in my life, and happy to be back, thanks to the school board for your service.
My name is Maria Alonso, and I have been in Des Moines since 1997. That makes me very young. And I have three children, all have attended Des Moines schools, two have graduated. I'm an at-large representative.
I am Anna Campos, Ward or District Three, East Side, born and raised on the East Side of Des Moines, Three, East Side graduates, and I was an East Side graduate. It's my 25th reunion this year, so... And so, I've lived here all my life.
Skylar Mayberry-Maze, the newest member of the Des Moines School Board, as of an appointment in April of this year. And I represent District Four, which is also the south side. I am a graduate of Park Avenue Elementary and Merrill Middle School, but I did not finish high school in Des Moines, but I've been fortunate to be a mentor to many graduates of the Des Moines Public School System, and that's one thing, one badge of honor I wear proudly.
Good evening. I'm Kim Marterano, and I serve District One, the northwest side of Des Moines.
Mr. Dix?
Patrick Dix. I'm an at-large school board member, and I have two boys who are just finishing up their freshman year at Roosevelt High School.
And Carl?
Carl? Yeah, Carl Vaughn. I'm an at-large council member. I've lived in Des Moines since 1971. My two sons are graduates of Roosevelt High School.
Well, it looks like we have a lot of Des Moines alumni. I, too, am a Des Moines alumni. I wish it was only 25 years ago, but it would be 55. East Side, I have two daughters that went to East. And I know Jackie has children at Roosevelt. So again, we're all very vested, not only from the fact that we live in Des Moines, but from the fact that we are part of the system or got our roots in the system. So again, thanks for everybody being here, and thanks for everybody that's attending tonight. So I think on the agenda is the first is the parks and recreation. So take it away, Mr. Page.
And I think, well, Ben's coming up, just for board members, we, when Mayor Bowleson and I thought about this, kind of a brief presentation, and really, it's to also educate ourselves and each other on the different ways that we're already working together. I don't know, we're going to have tons of time to go in-depth into a lot of questioning. So just really, you know, write questions down and thoughts that are coming to mind, and at the end, we'll do a little bit of reflecting and brainstorming to try and wrap that up.
That sounds good. I think that there's a lot of things we already do that a lot of people might not know, so I think that was one of the purposes where we already collectively, and then how can we branch out eventually into more? So take it away, Ben.
Okay. My name is Ben Page. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. So good evening, Mayor Bowleson and Des Moines City Council members, Chair Norris and Des Moines Public School Board members. It's great to be here. I also have a recent graduate from Lincoln High, and I have a sophomore at Lincoln High, too. So I'm deeply involved with volunteering in the schools, so I get both sides of the parks and rec and the school system here. All right, so our partnerships in parks and recreation are many, as you might guess, because we both have very similar missions, serving the public, but mostly kids, too. We start right away with a very purposeful partnership. We want one of the 15 members of the Des Moines Park and Recreation Board members to be an actual school board member, to help set the policies, the fees. The current member is Maria Alonso Diaz. This is the first time I've ever seen her, so it's great to see Maria. I'm teasing. She's at every meeting. She does a good job. I just wanted to see if you're paying attention here, so she's great. All right. So in the early 1990s, we had a handful of shared use agreements, we call them, 28E's in government language. It started off with building a facility that we would share here, then another one all over the city. And then by the late 90s, there was enough, and we put it into one agreement, and then every so often, we renew that agreement. And so this is one of the most important things in my world that we do with the school system. As you might guess, the city does not have the number of building gymnasiums that you have. We have two recreation centers. We're building the third. That'll be at the Grubway MCA site, it'll be called the Reitgard Community Recreation Center. But you'll hear later about the explosion of youth sports and how we need more space, and without this agreement, we wouldn't be able to pull off these numbers. So how we interchange each other's facilities is really simple. I need sports courts and sports fields, and I need your pools during the non-summer season so I can certify and recruit and train lifeguards. In return, you can see some of the creative things we've done, too. You might have read in the papers all across the nation that finding lifeguards is really challenging the last three years. But I'm here to tell you that, again, because of the creative partnerships, and the administrators back here do a great job working with us, I can pick up the phone and call any of these folks on the school side, and they're responsive, they're excellent to work with, they're part of the success that we have here is finding these solutions. But for pools, we went to the curriculum, we added lifeguard through some of the high schools so they can take lifeguard classes during the PE curriculum, which is really great. Our goal, we hire 300 seasonal workers. Our goal is to hire all of possible Des Moines residents and mostly Des Moines youth. So if they can get these done during the school session, that knocks down a barrier. We also pay for, because of the kindness of the city council and their budget, we pay for all the certification costs, and we guarantee them all a job as long as they pass this certification, right? So this is a really good partnership we have with the school. In return, you use a lot of our facilities, too. It's a great partnership. So you can just play at county soccer. You just heard about Hoover. I watched that match that took them to the final game. It was great to see them out at county soccer playing. We recently upgraded Weyland Tennis Court, rebuilt that entire tennis court, and that's where Roosevelt plays a lot of their home games, currently under construction. On the north side is the Burden Tennis Complex, just across the street from North High. That's a several hundred thousand dollar investment. We're also going to add courts, including new basketball courts that don't exist today. So it's going to be a great addition to our system. Also, you use our pools, too, in the summertime. Your pool teams, your swim teams like to be outside like everybody else this time of year, so when they want to practice, they use the outdoor pools. And of course, cross-country runs at our largest park, Newing Park. But also, the golf teams use all three of our city golf courses, too, all very affordable exchanges. One of my favorite things we've done, I remember this, I remember Chris Coleman, when I brought the proposal to the city council, was youth sports has just dropped over the last five years for participation across our nation. Des Moines was not spared in this event. So we started looking at this, and I heard the facts that Board Norris was talking about, Chair Norris was talking about, 30,000 kids, and I'll just give you one example. Six years ago, we had 300 kids playing basketball grades K through seven. That's embarrassing. That's a problem. So as we dug into this, we found out two major challenges: transportation and affordability. I'll give you an example. Today, our programs are still very affordable, but today, basketball will cost you $60. Right now, we put a proposal six years ago to the city council to knock that in half, and at the council table, Chris started it, but the rest of them unanimously supported it to knock it down to $5. This is important, because nobody else in the nation is doing this. We all get to travel for your national conferences. Every time I travel in the nation, I get a call or I get stopped by colleagues saying, "How did you do this?" And I remember the council talking about, there's lots of things we subsidize for the growth of our city, but why not subsidize the future leaders, youth, right? We all know, if we get kids in extracurricular activities that are positive and healthy for them, their outcomes as they get to develop will be much better. So this program is about, you're about to see some stats here, how we went from 300 to over 1,200 kids in basketball, just one example. But to get on this list, you have to qualify for the free and reduced lunch program. And that's another great partnership with the administration. They collect that data for us. We want to make it easy. We want to knock down all the barriers we can. We don't make them come to the city and prove more documentation than they need to need. They get to, during the registration for school, check the simple box. We get an updated list from the school that's confidential, and they get in for $5 all year long. It gets renewed every year. It's just one safeguard to make sure we're serving the folks that really needs served. But not all families can benefit, so we have a secondary scholarship programs that are for families, too, because not everybody wants just youth sports. Shelter rentals, you can see up there, pool passes, community gardens, all the things we do, we have ways to make sure folks can afford all of our services. So like I said, here's a sampling of our youth sports programs. They go K through seventh grade. You can see, I was talking about five years ago, we would be lucky through all sports to get 1,000. Now, six years into this, we're almost to 3,000. As you can see, almost 1,200 are using the $5 scholarship program. So just for a moment, think where would these kids be if they didn't have that program? Our biggest challenge is facilities, sports courts, and volunteer coaches. So far, it's working great, so thank you. I want to put a quick plug in for the Friends of Des Moines Parks. It's our foundation, not to be confused with the Park and Recreation Board. It's its own foundation governed by volunteer board members and an executive director. They raise a lot of money for good causes, like more playgrounds, more trees, et cetera. But recently, I went to them, and I said, "We still have a barrier." When I would show up at the youth sports events, you could see that a lot of kids would show up without any sports equipment still. And we wanted to knock that barrier down. So just two years ago, we challenged this board to go out and raise even more money. And you can see, in 2022, they've been successful to provide every kid... That's the key word. We don't want to create a system where the kids that have versus the kids that have not would see the difference. Every kid, regardless of their ability to pay, at every one of these sports programs gets a new baseball, a new basketball, so forth and so on. Two years into that, at $5,000, at 5,000 balls, at $15 a ball, you can do the math, it's quite a lot of fundraising for sports equipment. A long, long program that Mayor Bowleson created that still goes to this day is our pass-and-play. It's pool season. We've opened the pools. It's fun. Let's make sure they're full now. So one of my favorite things we do with pools is students that have 2.8 or higher GPA and miss less than 10 days of school, and you provide us the list, and this is for middle school and high school only, get a free season single pass to go to the pools. Again, a positive way to go pool off, meet their friends, have fun, hopefully find a positive mentor, maybe become a lifeguard. You can see in 2023, we got 231 passes redeemed. Some things that people have no idea that we do is environmental education. Our mission in parks and recreation is helping Des Moines live well, play hard, protect the earth, so why not better start with our students to talk about the importance of conservation and why these 4,000 acres of parkland are important, and all the benefits they have for our park system. So we make ourselves available, as you can see, the administration at Lovejoy really takes us up on this, but any school that wants us to come by, it's a one-person operation, we have to break it up, there's more interest, but we go by and we do all kinds of environmental education. You might have read recently, last week in the paper, that our park system just scored the 17th-best park system amongst 100 largest cities by population. There's a lot of analogies that go in that, and I won't bore you with that, but one of the big things they look at is equity. How do you place your parks in your community? Does everybody have what we call in our standard in terms, a 10-minute walk to a park from their residence? With the goal that everybody should, but the national average is 75, we're about at 77% recently. My favorite part of this story is we're actually 118th largest city. We're not even in the top 100, but we're hitting that number 17. How do you do that without trying to spend more tax dollars? Partner up the school. So you can count this when you have official 28E agreement language that allows these spaces to be used outside of school hours. So we recently added these sites that are managed and owned and governed by the Des Moines Public School System. And just alone, these sites added almost 14,400 new residents within a 10-minute walk to a park, where of all those, only 6,000 did not have access before. So it's pretty cool that we're knocking down more barriers each year. And then school gets out, and we get all these kids, right? So we have to do something with them right now. I'm sure your educators are happy to have a little break, so we started summer camp this week. It's been great. Another partnership is we partner with you all to do some of the busing for field trips. We do a lot of things. We have five sites, as you can see, but there's 40 kids per site. We have to follow the national best practices. I'm sure you get that, how many students per educator. We had the same thing when we were out in the campsites. One of our challenges would be, that I threw out to the school board tonight, would be is we've wanted for a long time, and it's not because you don't want it as well, it's just finding the right resources to match up. We don't want this just to be fun and games. We want to help with the summer learning laws, but we're not experts in parks and rec. If there's a way we could partner up the school to even one day a week at each site to have some sort of educational component, we would love that. This has blossomed into one of the coolest things I think we've done in recent times, because they get to do field trips, not just for fun. They get a tour college classroom to see what it looks like. Dan Houston, the other day, called us, it's going to give him a free tour himself of principals, so they can see people that look like them in jobs in our city. Gives me goosebumps to think how cool it is to take these kids, give them opportunities that they don't know about. The first year we did this, Maria got to hear this story, we took one child, we took a whole group from the Evelyn K. Davis neighborhood. One kid went to Ashworth Pool. I think we'd all agree that Ashworth Pool is neat, but it's nothing like what you see today with all the different bells and whistles, slides, zero depth, M3. He thought he went on vacation. He said, "This isn't my city. This is a 10-minute drive from that neighborhood to there." He had never been to Ashworth Pool. We are getting kids open to all the things we have. They get to go to the zoo, they get to go to the Des Moines Botanical Gardens, they get to go get some culture at the art center. We take them everywhere. So this is something that's growing, that's something we think is a huge hit for the city, huge hit for the school system, and something we can't turn our back on. We also get these kids swim lessons while we have in CAFEP, too, because one drowning is too many. All these things take a lot of communication and marketing. So I want to thank our PIO team, as well as the schools. We do a lot of marketing together, because we can do all these great things, but if we don't talk about them and nobody uses them, then they're not great hits, right? Well, what's next? This is exciting. The Friends of Des Moines Parks have once again come to our call. They're going to buy us a van. We also got a grant from the Trust for Public Lands I spoke of earlier. It's going to be a mobile park on wheels. It's been ordered. As soon as we can get it here, we're going to deploy it, hopefully here in the next 30 days or so. And this will go out to spaces where we don't really have a lot of programming, so I can see us going to some of your schools during the summer. This is a year-round facility we can take out, so if you have ideas, I know that Maria, tell Maria she'll see me, and we'll start to put those on the list. I imagine this will get so full quickly, so hit us up soon if you want to be a part of the stop sometime this summer on this. That's a lot of information, quick, but Scott said I got eight minutes.
You did a great job, and it shows again, I would say, our Park and Rec has done an exceptional job working with the school district, and I think having the working relationship with having somebody on your Park and Rec Board definitely sets a tone, that everybody sees how you can work and the opportunities. And I know that the council people that helped pass that $5, game changer. And when you give a kid a ball, we've all had that experience, it is beyond words to see their excitement. So thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else?
Well, Mayor Bowleson, I just, Dave Berger and Jason Allen, I think probably are the two people that you spoke with.
Matt Smith, too.
And Matt Smith, back there. Anything you want to add, just real quickly, to what's been said already in terms of how we're working together?
I'm Dave Berger, Executive Director of Operations for Des Moines Schools. Appreciate the opportunity to visit a little bit, and Ben, great to see you. And I do just want to echo the fact that we have a phenomenal relationship with the city. We had some fantastic conversations about tennis courts today. Concrete's pretty exciting, if you're into concrete. No, we actually have some initiatives, like Ben indicated, that run parallel to one another. We certainly have a lot of shared spaces. We certainly have some opportunities also that we're moving forward with and are extremely excited at the prospect of being able to partner with the city on some things. We're currently in the process of actually just going to be starting on construction of a new synthetic for practice field and track and for Lincoln High School. We're looking to do the same at East, it's practice field there, not a track. And then we're looking to roll out the exact same type of project for Hoover High School and North, primarily so that we have the ability to extend the amount of time that our kids are actually able to stay engaged and involved in a variety of activities. So we're looking forward to any opportunities that we can find with the city to be able to expand access with those. I think all of those, we are interested in looking at what does it look like to provide public access and be able to sort of expand the amount of footprint that's available to residents.
Great. Thank you so much. So now, I'd love to welcome Kristin up. Kristin Rourke is, I think, no stranger to this group, because Dr. Roberts, you, and Kristin and others came and presented about preschool. So the presentation's going to be a little bit different, and she's going to talk a little bit about the investment that is a result of some of DMPS, some of the city's investment in preschool. So Kristin, take it away.[1760.66]
Thank you. Thank you for having me, uh, City Council, Mayor Bozen, Chair Norris, Superintendent Dr. Roberts, and the School Board. Um, I'm really excited to be here, and this partnership has been amazing this year. I'm excited to share some of the progress we've made and some of the growth and successes that this investment's had and the impact on our students and our district. So, um, just as a review for City Council and for others that may not know, um, over the next, it started this year, um, I'm, this year, a $3.3 million investment to expand our preschool offerings for full day. We currently get 50% per pupil funding for our preschool students. So, for this year, we opened six new classrooms that are full-day programming, um, at free of charge, um, to our four-year-olds. Uh, two classrooms at Carver, one at Capital View, one at Jackson, and two at Greenwood. Uh, the funding that was provided helps to fund our teacher's salary and benefits, uh, in addition to the furniture and materials that are required for the classroom. Um, this year, we did do some scholarships for our community partners. We have 14 community partners, um, throughout the city that are classrooms that we partner with as a district to help expand more equitable access to preschool. Those scholarships did not go over as well as we had hoped initially, so what we discussed at the last meeting would, was that we would discontinue those and reallocate those funds to open another classroom for next year. So, for this fiscal year, um, what we're excited to do is we're going to be moving one of our Greenwood classrooms over to Garten. The reason for this being, um, Garten is a two-section building, and we had three preschool classrooms, and didn't feel good asking those, those kiddos to then go to another building. So, we moved that classroom to Garten, and then, with the carryover from this year that went unspent, we are able to open a second classroom at Garten, um, which is great because, you know, um, we follow different standards, we have a different curriculum, and so having that teaching partner is really important. And when we're thinking about retention of our staff, feeling that support is really important. Um, additionally, we'll be adding another classroom at Madison. Um, this will be a singleton, this will be, um, with the extra $200,000 that we'll be adding for next year, and I'll talk about a little, little bit more of that in a minute. Um, we will discontinue those partner scholarships, and then, um, as we're really thinking about how we're providing preschool to our students, right now, we have, um, we have a little bit, some silos because of funding. And so, like, currently, right now, our students with IEPs are only serving our centers, not our satellites. And so, that will be part of our reimagining work of no matter your ability, zip code, or income, you should be able to get your needs met in any of our preschool classrooms. And so, there are steps that we're taking along that way to, for that to be able to Um, so, here's a map for you. Um, you can see, just so you can see where we are in the district and where we have some deserts. So, we have our, our early childhood centers and the red stars, and then, our current satellite classrooms are the black stars, and then, uh, the green stars are our new satellite locations. And then, um, so you can see the two locations at Garten and Madison that are city-funded, and, um, our two Montessori classrooms, um, at Pleasant Hill as part of our Montessori expansion. So, it's really exciting just to take a minute to look at that map from where we were just two years ago to where we are now with our preschool offerings. We'll have now 12 satellite locations, um, which is eight more than we had before. So, um, just really appreciate the investment and what this means. So, that's why I'm really excited to share this next slide. So, in preschool, our state-mandated assessment is much different than K5. Gold is an observation-based assessment, and we look at the whole child and all of those domains. So, you can see, this is just hot off the press as of like two days ago, our spring checkpoint. Look at that growth from the fall to spring in our students. Like, it just gives you pause, and it really shows the impact that preschool has on our students. We already know that it, we see it in, um, our students that attend preschool versus those that don't in K5. But, look at how these students, where they are performing when they came in, and how they're leaving, um, how they're leaving us, and setting them up for success in kindergarten and ready to learn. Um, I do want to note, like I said, um, that our students with IEPs, so these, this data is just for the city-funded classrooms. So, this data does currently not, um, show data for students with IEPs in here. Um, so, I just want to make note of that. Um, but just huge success and celebrations. Um, some of our challenges, and I didn't put this on the slide because I think everybody already knows this, transportation is a huge barrier for us and continues to be a barrier, and filling afternoon slots. Time is not great for families, and that's why we need the full day, and that, that's why our, those are our classrooms that are filling first. Um, enrollment is looking really, really good in our full-day classrooms for next year. Half-day, afternoon, not great. Um, I think it just continues to speak to how, um, that full-day programming really supports the workforce, um, in our community. The challenge right now is we currently still have three teacher vacancies throughout our department, um, out of, uh, hi, I think we have around 85 teacher, um, uh, preschool positions, and, um, two of those vacancies are in our city-funded classrooms. And so, that, um, where we are seeing the highest retention is in our centers, and part of that I do think is around support that's provided for teachers. Um, because we have a separate, separate standards, separate curriculum, we do see a higher retention in our centers currently. I am also proud to say that we have the highest retention, staff retention in our district at 91% in preschool right now. So, um, I think that's really exciting. Um, speaking to that, um, with all the addition of these classrooms, we have added some extra support, um, a title of funding to add an instructional coach and social worker to help support these satellite classrooms to hopefully help with some of the retention in these satellite preschool classrooms. And another barrier or challenge right now, um, we received some funding from Early Childhood Iowa, um, that helps expand the day from, uh, for some of our students that meet the income guidelines. Um, we're seeing a 7% decrease in that funding for next year. Um, so, I'm hopeful with the, that extra $25,000 out of that extra $200,000 we'll be getting, we could help eliminate that, um, use that money to where we're losing those ECI dollars for next year to help. So, we're not decreasing the amount of students we're providing full-day funding for. And so, here's our financials, just as, um, for everyone that's not aware, so this, um, initially, we had the $1.3 million, and then, uh, then, uh, this year, next year, um, $1 million each. Um, and then, we're receiving the additional $200,000 for FY25. Um, we will be using, we're hopeful to use that $175,000 for the opening of Madison, and that extra $25,000 from the $200,000 to extend the day at other locations. Um, so, you can see with the carryover amount that we will have, um, which includes the unspent, um, dollars from those, um, city scholarships as well. So, um, a lot of exciting things happening, um, lots of celebrations. I hope I moved my timeline, I told. You asked Matt Smith and Kristen to, the DMPS is Chatty's staff to talk under 10 minutes? Not an easy feat.
Thanks, Kristen. Dr. Roberts, is there anything you want to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very quickly, thank you, Kristen. Um, you know, whenever we engage in conversations about preschool, uh, whether it's with Kristen and I, Kristen and the entire team, or just in general, uh, we have so much appreciation and gratitude to the Mayor and City Council for your investment in preschool. You know, when you look at the data that Kristen shared, for example, when we look at growth, uh, you will recognize that the highest growth that we saw in our preschool students is in the area of math. And certainly, uh, one of the, the lowest area of growth is that in terms of physical growth. So, we probably just need to make sure that, um, we're adding more nutrients to our foods or something. Uh, but the excitement around this data that is shared here bodes well for what is to come if we are truly going to invest in our youth. The data that we did not share today, because again, we were focused in brevity with the presentation, is the fact that when we've looked at our elementary school students in grades one through five who attended preschool in the Des Moines Public Schools compared to those who did not, we see differences in academic, um, achievement that is as high as about 32 percentage points. So, this is the right investment, and certainly want to make sure that we're saying thanks, 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 and look forward to continue the partnership around preschool.
So, just to give people an update, um, from the state, you get 10 hours, correct? It's like 10 hours a student, and then, you supplement another five hours?
Yes. So, yep.
And that really just gets you to half a day, or half-day?
Yeah. So, um, with the, that 50% funding that we get for 10 hours, we provide 15.
Okay, so, that's why it is such a workforce issue, and I know, I think Josh has served on the Early Childhood Committee or the Board from Pol County, and so, we appreciate showing us that our investment was very beneficial, and I just want to thank the council for being supportive of it with our ARPA dollars, because it is making a difference. And how many kids come into the district that don't have preschool? How many kids enter kindergarten, I guess?
A little under 50%.
Okay.
And so, I want to add one more data point, just to drive it on home. Um, our, um, the data from the fall, um, that, our kindergarten data, our students that are English language learners were three times more likely to meet benchmark if they attended preschool, and our students that qualify for, uh, free and reduced lunch are twice as likely. So, um, it really makes a difference. So, thank you, um, from the bottom of my heart, like, this is, this is like what I live for, and I, I'm really passionate about it, and, um, really excited to continue this partnership and, um, just do better for, um, our students in Des Moines. So, thank you very much.
Does anybody else?
Any other questions?
I, I don't have a question, but I, I just want to say, I think this is one of the most impactful things that we did with our ARPA dollars. I, I'm glad we did it. I'm glad to, that we, we have concrete data after the first year about the, the success of that impact. And I'm hopeful that as a city, that, that we look for additional ways that we can be supportive. I think that, uh, you know, over the long term, from a investment in neighborhoods, this is absolutely consistent with, with what, uh, you know, the local option sales taxes intended to do as well, and that even if we can't be at the level that we were under ARPA, that it's worthwhile for us to look at how we can continue to partner and continue to, to build this, because I think it's, it's incredibly important and one of, one of the best things that we can do in, in collaboration with the city, the school.
Thanks. I just have a question. So, the ECI money that, um, was that part of the consolidation when the, the departments consolidated and they, at the state level, to be clear? So, what, what, why did we lose our funding from the state for that? Is there, did they just get rid of it in general?
I think they cut it back when they did away. I think they dissolved that board.
Yeah, I don't know the details of that. I've been off the board for a while.
But probably good for us to keep in mind for the legislative.
I think that's something we can talk about, too, from a legislative standpoint, how we help advocate. So, and with that, we'll hear more about the library.
Okay.
From Sue Woody.
Hello. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Leadership, School Board, and Dr. Roberts. Just for the record, Lincoln High grad, two Roosevelt grads with my son. What an honor it is to be here tonight to talk about how important our relationships with the schools are. Relationships with the city, relationships with the library, and relationships with Des Moines Public Schools, we're all inextricably intertwined and dependent on each other. This is a true it takes a village, and I'm just so thrilled to be here. I'd like to show you a quick 30-second video. I have a six-and-a-half-minute video on our website, dmpl.org, if you'd like to take a look at that later, um, just to show you what our relationship looks like in the classroom.
A lifetime of success begins with early literacy. Everyone has a role to play. So many kids want to read, but it's not always an option for them. And so, it's fantastic to be able to go and meet them where they are.
When Rosie comes into the classroom, they love Rosie, they want to hug Rosie.
And they feel like she's their friend.
And it just brings that joy and excitement to reading.
You can be a Rosie reader, too. Find out how at your Des Moines Public Library and at dmpl.org.
That was just our super quick version of that, but, um, we can go into more detail, and I'm going to fast forward, I don't want to do any more YouTube videos. There we go. Kristen did such a great job talking about preschools, and wow, congratulations on what a success that has been, and we all know how important preschools are. Our relationship with Des Moines Public Schools and preschools is through our Simple Steps to Success: Reading, Write, Sing, Play, and Talk, five simple things that families can do. And, um, I'm just going to touch on some of the basics of that, there. What we do with Des Moines Public Schools, we reach out to preschools and Drake Headstarts, and each of them get a Simple Steps storytime and a deposit collection of books for the classroom. Our librarians go to all of the preschool classrooms and headstarts twice a month, and the collections get switched out monthly. So, they get about 25 books of, um, board books and, and pre- and early literacy, um, books, materials. Headstarts are included in some of the Des Moines classrooms, but we reach all of the Drake Headstarts, including Oak Academy, Capital Park, Camigo, just to name a few. Our librarians model literacy activities, and they provide access to materials and information that support caregivers, that support teachers, that support families, incorporating these pre-literacy skills into their daily routines. These are five simple things that we really try to hammer into. The school year, um, starting in August, ending in May, our librarians hosted 257 off-site preschool and headstart programs, reaching a total of 18,144 participants. So, that's our preschool program. Thanks to the generosity of the City Council and some ARPA funding, our latest new addition, Simple Steps is our pre-literacy program. Rosie Reader is our early literacy initiative, because we know that by third grade, it is so crucial for our kiddos to be reading so that they can have school success for the rest of their academic careers. So, we say they have to learn to read, so you can read to learn. And how this looks is a Rosie Reader second-grade outreach. Forty elementary schools, we visit four times with our outreach librarians, um, and go to all second-grade classrooms. These visits are a little bit different than our pre-literacy. They are about building excitement for reading, providing activities that help student, students gain an understanding of what libraries are all about, what resources do we offer. And they empower students. There's a, a little curriculum that we have that starts from reading books to writing books, little mini-books and graphic novels that, that really empower kids to be an author and write and read and know how important that is. And again, these classrooms also receive deposit collections. They're a little bit different because we, these are student-driven collections. We want to know what is that classroom in, into? Is it climate change? Is it, you know, sports, whatever? We're going to make sure those deposit collections, 25 books that usually each classroom gets, um, are based specifically on their wants and needs. In addition to the classroom deposits, children receive materials, including library applications, uh, Simple Steps information, and books, books to take home for their personal libraries. A very wise library director by the name of Mrs. Elaine Estes, I'm sure many of you know who she is, taught me a very important lesson, that all children need three libraries. They need a home library, they need books in their home that they have access to every day. They need school libraries, and the school libraries are built to support the curriculum of the schools, and they need public libraries. So, we've really taken, um, quite an initiative to make sure that children are getting books in their homes. Um, the ultimate goals of our second-grade outreach is to help children identify as readers, get them excited about reading, enhancing their joy of reading, and of course, supporting our school literacy efforts. So, here's just a couple pictures for you. I love, this is a before and after of early summer reading access. We just started our summer, kicked off our summer reading program. We had a kickoff event on Sunday, 600 children and their families came to the Central Library. Um, when you sign up for, for summer reading, you get a book. The prize comes first, and that is a free book, quality book, nice books, appropriate books, to take home for those personal libraries I mentioned. Uh, we also do these, we go out to summer sites, Parks and Rec, summer camps, Metro Kids, other community events. We'll be at the Pride Parade, um, we have events going on all throughout the community as well as with our schools. So, this is a before and after. You see the kids with their brand, and they just signed up as a classroom for their summer reading program. They received their books, they're reading them, and then, the other picture is a picture, it's called the Taki Party. We give them parties if they reach their summer We give them parties if they reach their summer reading goals. Takis are those like chips, they're like little straws, I know kids love them. We have a slime party, have a Takki party. They get to choose what kind of party they want for fulfilling their summer reading goals. Super fun and Rosie, of course, stops and visits. You'll see a little Rosie on the one picture, you'll see our big Rosie that comes to all the parties. The other little Rosies are in the classrooms. A quote from a Riverwoods teacher, "My students were always excited when Rosie Reader visited our classroom. The visits were always engaging and taught the students the importance of reading and the public library. We all learned so much about the amazing resources, our opportunities that the public library provides our community. Riverwoods loves Rosie Reader and we love Riverwoods. We love all of our partners." I mentioned early access. We started out last year by providing early summer reading access to our second-grade classrooms and then the preschoolers found out about it and said, "Oh hey, what about us? You come visit us? We want to sign up." So 3,878 books were distributed just this last month to all preschoolers and second graders to help build those home libraries because we all know about the summer slide. I don't need to tell any of you about that, how important that is. Here's just a list, a very long list of our education partners, starting with our early educations, our preschools, our Headstarts, our elementary schools, private and public, middle schools and high schools. We need that middle school and high school to be a lot longer than it is. There's lots of opportunities for us in the future. Here's other partners that we do literacy outreach with, whether it's House of Mercy, Steam on the Ridge, Latino Heritage Festivals, I have mentioned Pride Festivals, Juneteenth. We are out there, we're signing kids up for summer reading, we're giving them, distributing quality books for their home libraries and doing STEM activities, literacy activities, keeping them engaged all year long. Another great quote from McKinley. McKinley Elementary School absolutely loves Rosie Reader. She comes to visit our preschool program, second-grade classrooms, and after-school programs. She has also participated in community resource fairs and summer programs. She has become so much a part of our school family that she even came to Picture Day and she's in the yearbook, which I think is great because she's a part of that community. Our youngest students love storytime and playing with little Rosie and our older kids love the field trip to the public library and dressing up as Big Rosie. They can't wait until they're old enough to volunteer. And our volunteer program, Volantines, is another really important program that the schools and libraries work together to get volunteers to come work at the library over the summer. They learn lots of really crucial skills and I'm going to talk about those field trips again in a minute. Just another pictures you'll see on one side with the littles, you've got our deposit collections. These are some, these are obviously some toddlers, probably have a Headstart, looking at their deposit collection books. On the other side, we've got Lesbia Juarez, who's one of our outreach librarians. I believe she looks like Greenwood. She's at a park and she's distributing books and the kids are able to go through the summer reading program and pick out books on their own. It's just all summer long, all year long. The future looks bright. We would love to have annual third-grade field trips to all of our neighborhood libraries. Some of them are doing it now, but someone mentioned earlier, transportation is a huge barrier. But we think that this is just a great culmination of, we're there for preschool, we're there for second grade. We want our third graders to come to the library and do what? Get a library card. And that leads me to another initiative that I'd be really excited about. Student ID cards equal library cards. We started this path before the pandemic, kind of got waylaid, lots of changes went on, then this whole ban books and the school libraries and et cetera. I think it's time to bring this up again. Why can't their student ID card be their library card? We would love to see that happen. That way they would have access to all of our digital items as well. And that brings us to information and digital literacy outreach to middle and high schools. There's so many opportunities that were the mainstay of school libraries. They provided all of the information literacy and now digital literacy and that now that many schools don't have working, active school libraries with school librarians, this is really, you know, affecting our high school and middle schoolers and we'd love to be a part of bringing that back and being a part of that solution. Want to leave you with some numbers. That's always fun. For the last school year, total school and Headstart programs, 589 programs by our outreach team, reaching 30,873 attendees of all of those programs. Deposit collections, I've told you a lot about those, 85 classrooms in 24 Des Moines Public School buildings, including Roosevelt High School, so we're not just all about the littles. Total book circulation in the schools, 19,047 books. So that's, it's win-win for everyone. Those book giveaways, I already told you about the early access, 3,878, but throughout the last year, including all of our outreach, our literacy outreach, we also distributed 6,888 more books for a total of 10,766 books. Those are all going directly to those home libraries, home libraries, school libraries, public libraries, we need them all, kids need them all. Thank you. I'd like to just point out, this is Willie Montgomery, who is the principal at Jefferson Elementary, and so he was a part of our campaign. So learn to read, so you can read to learn. Thank you so much. I appreciate all that you do and all that you do together.
Thank you.
I just want to point out to the City Council and obviously to Sue's fierce leadership, our libraries are underfunded and our schools don't have the staffing ratios to be able to support full-time, trained, professionally-trained librarians. And so this is essential. And I think when we talk about additional partnerships, this is what we really grow into.
Ms. Norris?
I was going to say thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo that even, like, I did my high school reunion tour at Lincoln High School, which doesn't even have a library. So I would really love to see us figure out how to make sure that our students all have access to the library. I think it's an easy win and something that could benefit both of us as we look at literacy and just our community.
I would agree with that too, because my high school didn't have one for a while. I think it's back, but again, in the high school, it's much harder to cover and the expense of librarians and the expertise that you have, I'm sure there's ways we can look at working together. So, and the next one up is our Neighborhood Revitalization and Housing. Eric Lundey, I'll let you start off and I don't know if you have other people that are going to help present too.
I'm honored to be here with this joint session. Everybody on the left side probably knows who I am. Eric Lundey, I'm the Deputy Director of Neighborhood Services. Chris Johansson, the Director, sends his regrets. He's double-booked with the Neighborhood Outreach Advisory Group that works with our recognized neighborhoods, so I'm in his stead. That said, Neighborhood Services is a department that serves the needs of our neighborhoods. We strive to have clean neighborhoods with safe and affordable housing, so that's really paramount. So when we're talking about parks, libraries, schools, another leg of the stool, leg of the stool is definitely safe, affordable housing at all levels and that's a big challenge. I'm not going to talk tonight about the meat and potatoes of our department, which is enforcement and preservation of our existing housing stock. We have the largest amount of affordable housing in the Des Moines metro, but our meat and potatoes is where a lot of our resources get put into enforcement, which our council is very good at helping us out with. Tonight, I have a couple folks here that are going to talk about the vegetables, okay? Where we're trying to balance out our plate with our affordable housing. And so tonight, we have Jody Jurzwick with our Neighborhood Affordable Housing Manager and then I also have Dan Grauerholz, who will follow up with her. I should mention, I do have two kids that are alum of the Des Moines Public Schools at Roosevelt and my wife is currently a kindergarten teacher at Perkins. Go Penguins, eat the woodchucks, right? So I'll have Jody move next.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Des Moines School Board, school and city leadership. My name is Jody Jurzwick and I'm the Affordable Housing Programs Manager. The city seeks to strengthen and stabilize and preserve Des Moines' neighborhoods through our revitalization efforts. We do this through investment, collaboration, and diversification of programs and services. You all should have a copy of our Neighborhood Revitalization Toolkit, as shown on the screen, that shows all of our programs and resources that the city uses for neighborhood revitalization in areas that have differing market conditions. One source of funding is the city's once-kept local option sales tax. It is for, part of it is used for housing programs and services such as public nuisance abatement, our citywide block challenge grant program, and a rental housing enhancement program. The city also receives CDBG and Home Federal Entitlement Grants from HUD. The city uses this funding for programs including owner-occupied housing repair and rehabilitation in collaboration with the ION program, rental housing programs to expand the supply of affordable rental units, including residential rental property rehab and new construction, Habitat for Humanity and Home Inc., our nonprofits that receive federal grant funding from the city to rehab or build affordable homes and provide homebuyer assistance. The city is currently developing a new program for our nonprofit partners to help fund acquisition of residential vacant lots and fund city-approved demolition of structures when necessary. The nonprofit Invest DSM was created in 2019 by the City of Des Moines and County to spearhead revitalization efforts in Des Moines middle-market neighborhoods. They currently work in four special investment districts and will add two more in 2025 and intend to work in each for about 10 years. This is 29 Hartford Avenue in Des Moines. It was a rehab project. The city uses residential property acquisition and rehabilitation tools in areas with weaker markets or for abandoned vacant and blighted property. One such tool is the Tax Sout Certificate Tax Sout Deed Process. The property at 29 Hartford Avenue was vacant and boarded up when the city acquired it through a tax out deed. The property was then sold to a private developer who rehabbed the property. The second tool used is the city's Judgment Lean waiver program and processes that address unpaid property taxes, specialist assessments, which were also used on 29 Hartford Avenue. My apologies. The third tool used is our Blighted Property Rehab Program. That was also used at 29 Hartford Avenue, which provides financial assistance for the rehabilitation of property that has become vacant, abandoned, and blighted.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, and the City of Des Moines School Board. My name's Dan Grauerholz, property improvement administrator, and you might be asking what a property improvement division does. Well, the Property Improvement Division is in place to support a strong and healthy community by addressing blighted, vacant, and deteriorating properties across the city of Des Moines. Studies have shown that property conditions affect the crime rate and overall health negatively. We work, we work to support citywide improvements by implementing a uniform exterior standard and helping those in need. Property improvement programs include improving our neighborhoods. It's a critical exterior repair program that we rolled out a couple of years ago. Have had a lot of great success with that. It's exterior repair, low income, there's application process, and it's been a great success. We've had overwhelming response to that. Just recently, we rolled out Vacant Property Registry. That is a program that addresses vacant properties across the city, commercial and residential, and the purpose behind that is to, one, provide owner accountability to keep the properties in good repair. Many of these properties have already been turned over into either owner-occupied properties or now rental properties. So we're seeing success with that and it improves property condition overall, also provides safety to our first responders. If they know the property's vacant, they don't have to clear a house that's dangerous and may put them at risk. Blitz on Blight is another program that is in place to eliminate and prevent blighted properties. Blitz on Blight, I can't even say it, blight properties, public nuisances, the process on that will, can go two routes. The first route is renovation. That's what we want to see. We want to see these houses get put back into usable service. In extreme cases, demolition of the property.
The city is preparing to hire a consultant to create a housing strategy. The housing strategy will help identify and address all housing needs, including availability and location, guide city policies, programs, and actions affecting all housing types, and support sustainability efforts in the Adapt DSM Climate Action Plan. City ION and Blighted Property Rehab Programs and the Tax Sout Certificate Deed Process Tools are used with existing housing stock, which helps further the city's commitment to sustainable practices. City staff have researched the feasibility of creating a land bank. The land bank would allow the acquisition and holding of properties for strategic disposition and redevelopment in weaker markets. Des Moines, West Des Moines, and Polk County staff are working with an advisory committee to create a community land trust. The purpose of the CLT is to preserve affordability in perpetuity and increase available quality affordable housing stock. A CLT can help protect against negative market impacts, strengthen, stabilize, and preserve neighborhoods, and help build equity for homeowners.
The Property Maintenance Code is a program that is in development right now. It will be modeled after the Rental Code, Chapter 60, that the city already uses. It will only address the exterior of the property. Again, a uniform code for all properties, whether it's commercial or residential. ION will act as a safety net for families in need on that. There will be application process. They have requirements they need to meet as far as income goes and the type of repairs, but we will be there to support the people that need the support. As I mentioned, it's in development. We're currently working on scheduling and facilitating informational meetings and our hope is to have this in place, training, and rolling out by the end of the year. There you go. Short and sweet.
Thank you. I think it's one thing, when you see all the empty lots or the housing, new housing going in or being revitalized that have been maybe abandoned, that gives opportunity for families to live in Des Moines and more children coming to our schools. So I think it's, we've taken this on as a priority to make sure that every piece of property has value in our city, but also offers opportunity for families to have affordability and good, safe housing. So would you like to add anything else? Anybody else?
Any questions from, I'm actually curious, are there currently ways where Des Moines Public Schools and the city are working together on this in any way?
Identifying opportunities, like in housing?
Yeah, or awareness rates.
I think that's one thing I think we can do. You know, we have the Invest DSM that's pretty entrenched in the neighborhoods, working with the neighborhoods. ION is relatively new and giving opportunities for families that might be stressed, that they can apply and get their home repaired, like a new roof, new siding, new windows, because at the end of the day, that also helps for energy efficiency. And so there's a lot of ways, so maybe there's some way we can coordinate. I think, Josh, yeah?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think the ION program, I mean, I think one of the important things, that only works if the folks who need it, the families who need it, the residents who need it, know about it and it's really hard, I mean, one of the challenges in all of this is getting that information out. And I think that program is really important and to the extent that folks in school buildings have some insight into what's going on in a home and can be that connector, I think that's a real opportunity to enhance that program. The other thing where I think there's maybe an opportunity, the schools, I think, are primed to kind of help on the block grant challenge because one of the points of the block grant challenge is to create community, is people also invest in their homes and there's kind of some of that built-in community from a neighborhood perspective with the schools. And that's a great way too. If the schools are introducing folks to a program that helps them, that just reinforces the positive relationship with the school.
I'd like to add, one thing that we have done with the school system is, we had reached out to the school to determine what the primary languages that we needed to address and that led to an insert that goes into our mailings, to where there, I think there's 12 or 15 different languages that direct them to a translation service if they need help reading the documents. if they need help reading the documents.
Yeah, that's great, and I'm just, I see Jason Allen there and thinking about the community partners, and how even using the network of community partners that support Des Moines Public Schools is just one of many ways to, to work together.
I think one opportunity for future collaboration could be with the Community Land Trust. Currently, we do have a Des Moines, um, Des Moines School District employee on the advisory committee, and, um, the, the Community Land Trust is in the very early stages, but that will require, uh, buy-in and, uh, community effort, and I think that is something that should be considered as well.
I think Scott Sanders, city manager, it would also be an opportunity for us to actually strategize together moving forward. We have great programs in our toolkits, um, but what we don't have is necessarily what the impact would be for, uh, family, uh, housing units, uh, the impact on the schools. And so I, I think there's a, a great opportunity, uh, to, to work together, you know, especially if you're looking at, uh, schools that have excess capacity and an opportunity to grow. Uh, that could help us in understanding, uh, density, but, uh, also housing type, um, because we, we do get a lot of interest from developers in, uh, apartment buildings with a one bedroom, and that oftentimes is not serving anyone with children. And so, uh, if we had an opportunity to strategize together, maybe we would, uh, lean more on two-bedroom, three-bedroom situations to help families with children.
And that may be the perfect segue, potentially, to reimagining education.
There you go.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, uh, I think one of the things that's really exciting that I know DNPS has been talking about a lot is reimagining education, and it is that opportunity to, uh, kind of look at our city, look at population trends, and, uh, and rethink education, as we talked about earlier. I think one of the most exciting things is to make sure that it's done in partnership with the city, uh, because you have an awareness of where development is going, where there's interest in development, and how that may impact, uh, school enrollment patterns. And so, um, with that, is that an appropriate setup? Um, then I'm gonna turn it to you, Matt, who is leading the reimagining education initiative.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you so much for having us today. Um, I'll follow suit. I am also a parent of students in Des Moines Public Schools. I've got two graduates, and I've got two more students, uh, in Des Moines Public Schools, one still at Roosevelt, and one also at Perkins. That's a Penguin. So, there we go. We're representing well. Uh, before I get started, um, my name is Matt Smith. I'm the associate superintendent, um, and while I am, um, super fortunate and very, very blessed and honored to lead this facility, um, planning committee, I've got, um, some amazing colleagues, um, in the room that are also leading this, and that's Dave Berger, Amanda Miller, and Shashank Aurora. And so I want to make sure that they get duly noted because they are doing the heavy lifting. I often get the opportunity to just speak, and so I'm happy to do that. Um, I believe that we're at 6:45, so I've got about an hour? Is that?
Hi.
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna keep it to 10 minutes.
Goodbye, Mr. Speaker.
If, um, yeah, talky party on me. So, um, there are multiple reasons why we are actually engaging in a reimagining facility planning work, uh, in Des Moines Public Schools. Um, several of them are noted up there, but the primary reason that we're actually engaged in this and we are actually moving away from the notion of it being just a facility planning committee, and we are referring to it as a reimagining education committee, is because that's exactly what we're here to do. We serve children. We serve adults. We serve people. Yes, we do them in physical plant spaces mostly. We also do them in virtual spaces, but the work that we're doing is about people. It's about envisioning the future of our educators and that of our students, and what's it gonna be like 10 years, 15, 20 years from now for them, and are, are our spaces conducive to that style and modality of learning? That's what this work is really, really about. We do talk about bricks and mortar. We do talk about enrollments and capacities, and we do all of those things. We talk about electrical and mechanical efficiencies. All of those are a part of this work, but at the heart of it, and what we lead with is, how are we serving our students, our families, and our staff? That's what this work is about. We have an opportunity to optimize the utilization of our facilities. When we look at this, there will be no stone unturned in Des Moines Public Schools, literally no stone. We are going to the very foundation and the roots of our buildings to determine what we can do differently to better serve our students of today and our students of tomorrow. We also have very real financial and budget realities that we have to overcome. Chair Norris already mentioned that, and so we can run right through that. I think we're all aware of that. Um, we have a real opportunity to look at the investment of our facilities and talk about, are these the right investments for the next 10, 20, 30 years? Or are there some changes that we can make? Is there some courageous decisions that we can come to, to reestablish educating our students in Des Moines Public Schools that is not only gonna impact them, but impacts their families, impacts our community, because it's not just about the teaching and learning. It is about the heart, mind, and the spirit of our kids that we're serving. Our job is to pour into all of them, all of their beings, so that they walk out of our doors ready and prepared, competent and confident, to be the people that they were created to be, to serve one another, and to serve our community. That's what this plan is absolutely about. A reimagination can plan includes a lot. It is envisioning the future for our students. It's also about establishing future facilities, and it's about ensuring that our district resources are fiscally optimized. All of those things are included in our reimagined education plan. And again, we are leaving no stone unturned, and we are keeping all options on the table. You can see a list of what this plan may include, and again, this is not an exhaustive list, and it's also not a foregone conclusion on this list either, but we are considering everything from adjusting attendance boundaries, to looking at the addition of new schools, renovations, potential consolidations of current facilities, re-establishing grade configurations. Currently, right now, in most of our elementary schools, they're either K5 or pre-K5 in some satellite locations. We are also piloting next year adding a sixth grade to Finley Elementary School. So if Finley Elementary School is not only gonna be a Montessori, a second public Montessori, they're also gonna retain sixth graders next year. So we are looking at grade configurations as well as we get into this work to see what is gonna be best for our students, our staff, and our families of today, and our students and staff and families of tomorrow. And our approach can actually be summed up in three different ways. It is about academics, but it's also about economics, and it's also about culture. We are a teaching and learning organization, make no mistake about it. That is our bread and butter. That is what we show up to do every single day, to pour into students, to pour into staff, and to pour into our families. But we would be absolutely remiss if we did not take the opportunity to make sure that we are addressing the economic realities and looking at potential, um, opportunities to share spaces with our, our municipal and our government facilities, our private, um, facilities. We've got all kinds of opportunities to really wrap our arms around educating the whole child that is wrapped up in our economics. We've also got culture. We do talk about programs. We talk about activities. We talk about clubs. You've heard a lot of them here tonight that are also not only represented by Des Moines Public Schools, but that are absolutely driven by Parks and Rec, that are driven by the city of Des Moines. That is a true partnership. Those are individuals and programs that are showing up for the betterment of humanity, not just to put kids on fields. That's helpful, and that actually brings kids to safe spaces, but it's the why people show up. It's the intent of showing up to build community and, again, to pour into the heart, mind, and spirit of our kids, our staff, and our families. All of the work that we talk about in this committee is anchored in four components. We talk about the immersive multicultural learning environments, access to rigorous academic suites, access to world-class career and technical education, and wraparound holistic child development. We believe strongly that we, um, engage in these four components really, really well in Des Moines Public Schools, and we can absolutely do better. While we do really, really well in these areas for most students, for most staff, and for most families, we are not doing it well for all students, for all staff, and for all families. We have a real opportunity to take what we do really well already as a district and enhance and improve those services to get better outcomes and to create a community where folks are thriving, not surviving. They are thriving in these environments. This is what we're about. And these four anchors actually guide the process. Um, we are just wrapping up phase one of our process. This is a two-year process. We've got 71 active committee members that have raised their hand for a two-year commitment, and so we're just wrapping up phase one. Phase one was littered with data analysis, with research, with, um, visiting facilities both in Des Moines Public Schools and outside of Des Moines Public Schools. It also included a trip to Kansas City to visit three districts down there, to look at some of the state, state-of-the-art facilities, and what it's actually offering into the educational experience of our students. Phase two just started on Monday night, um, and this is where the heavy lifting really, really begins. Um, we've got more to talk about that there. This particular graphic is meant to represent the process in and of itself in its totality. What you'll see are the four components, our anchors wrapped around as the chain, but that actually only gets movement when each of those gears are actually working in concert with one another. You will find everybody in this room actually is represented in those gears. Our committee has representation from every last one of those gears. We've got, again, a committee of 71. It is parents, students, staff members, teachers, associates, administrators, um, business owners, community leaders, United Way, Food Bank of Iowa. We've got so many different representatives from our community, because people are showing up because they see the potential of making real substantial change, not only for our kids of today, but our kids of tomorrow. They're seeing the real opportunities of reimagining how children are served on a daily basis. I've never been a part of something that is more fulfilling and more exciting, has more opportunity to make a dramatic change that is gonna last for decades and generations to come. This committee is broken up into three subcommittees in phase one. It is around facilities, program offerings, and student experience. They also all get a deep immersion in our financial situation, not only in Des Moines Public Schools, but that of the state and what it looks like around the country to actually inform and impact how we're making decisions. We began by three-by-three sessions. Uh, we conducted them ourselves, but we also had our amazing school board also did a number of three-by-three sessions, um, that asked many and many of the same questions of our community. Um, what do we continue? What do we change? And what do we need to retire? The average age of our facilities is almost 80 years old. Almost 80 years old. A few things have happened in the last 80 years.
Just a few.
Developments are different. Where folks are residing, the density of the populations are moving around. What hasn't changed is the location of our facilities. We've changed some of the design of the classrooms. We've done some really amazing work over the years, but that amazing work is only superficial. If it doesn't actually change the experience students are having, it's not just about the educator speaking truth into them. It's about how we speak to them as a community, as a city, as an organization. It's about how we speak about not only how they're learning, but how they're actually experiencing school inside and out. What are they talking about when they're in our parks? What are they talking about when they're in our pools? Are they talking about school because it's pouring into them? Are they talking about it because they just have to go because it's a state mandate? Those are the real opportunities for us to change the paradigm and change the narrative for our students, our staff, and our families. Again, we have, um, we've talked to hundreds, if not thousands, of folks about understanding what do they want us to keep? What do they want us to continue or enhance or retire? And we've got a ton of data collection that we are utilizing to help drive some of the decisions that we're going to put forth in front of our school board, um, in the coming fall. We've also had a facility condition assessment conducted by, uh, Local Architects PBS. Um, we've got a million data points, all sort of summarized here on this slide for you, and what we have for every single one of our facilities is an estimated cost of renovations, but also estimated costs of potential large-scale improvements. Uh, we've looked at mechanical systems, electrical systems, structural systems, um, the educational adequacy of each of our facilities, you know, whether or not it's meeting the mission of the programs that are in that facility. So we've got data points, and we've got, we're data-rich right now. What we have is an opportunity to take that data-rich environment and apply it to phase two, which is really where the heavy lifting is that began Tuesday, uh, Monday night. This artifact represents the belief statements of this committee. 71 folks gathered around the table for the last six months, um, talking about what we believe in. Everyone has their own experience, everyone has their own bias, and everyone has their own agenda. Each of them dropped that to come together as a committee to talk about what is best for 5,000 stu-, or 30,000 students, 5,000 employees, and our community at large. What do we want to do to actually completely transform and reimagine the educational experience of our kids? And they landed on four absolutely amazing, courageous, and aggressive belief statements. And what these belief statements do is they hold us to doing the right thing in phase two, which is when we look at that data set and we get to these phase two objectives right here, and we start talking about, what does our enrollment trends tell us? What do we need to do with our spaces? Where do we need to actually place them or relocate them, or think about how to use them differently? How do we need to look at our boundaries? We go back to those belief statements, and we talk about how are these going to actually drive our work and be representative of the values of our community. Ultimately, this is gonna result in a generational change in Des Moines Public Schools. This is not about addressing a classroom space and putting up a new whiteboard. That's helpful. I've been a teacher, uh, I was a teacher for many years. Having a new whiteboard with a new projector is super helpful when it comes to delivering instruction. It's not the generational game changer that we're looking for from this committee. We are looking to completely revamp how we serve children, including instructional pedagogy, absolutely. And I'll just, I'm gonna jump on that real quick, because this is my last slide, I think. This is actually my last one. We talk a lot about instruction in Des Moines Public Schools because we should. We're a teaching and learning organization. But what we know right now is that you gotta do more than just change how you think about teaching. The space has to be conducive to students' learning. When you look at this room right now, and the number of folks in it, and the way it's designed, it's designed right now for occupancy capacity. That's how this is designed. It's not designed for functional capacity, for learning, for students to be able to group together around a, a table to solve a complex task, so they're achieving those academic rigors, but also they're learning from one another because they're building those social-emotional learning muscles, they're able to connect with one another with empathy, because they're bringing their own unique experiences to that conversation to solve that task. That's what learning is. It's not just about the academics. Academics are huge, and they're important, but to get there, you've gotta pour into the mind, the heart, and the spirit of the student, and that's actually what reimagining education is absolutely about. It's not about bricks and mortar. That's an outcome. It's a secondary outcome. What the bricks and mortar represents, and who it serves, and how we're serving, and giving access to student, that's what this is about. That's what we're actually moving forward with. I feel like I nailed the time.
I, I don't know if we have enough passion in that.
Matt, thank you so much. Dr. Roberts, do you want to make any additional comments? And then if there's questions, certainly welcome questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matt, again, as usual, thank you for your passion and leadership, Matt, Dave, Shashank, and Amanda for the work. Um, I certainly want to echo Matt's sentiments around the fact that this is likely going to be some of the most important work we've embarked upon. And, and I really value our time here today with you, Madam Mayor, and City Council, because this is work that we cannot do in isolation. It has to be done in partnership with the City Council. You know, as, as a data-driven organization, one of the things that stands out to me is the fact that there is a, a positive correlation between the quality of schools and how many people are attracted to cities, and the quality of schools and the value of real estate. And as we start to reimagine education, I think about so many implications that this work will have in the future for so many of the initiatives that we have here today. I want to harken back before I close to one of the references that, um, Ben Page made earlier, when he talked about, uh, where can we find opportunities to have the district partner with Parks and Rec around, um, summer learning loss, right? That is something that is always on top of mind for us, right? Summer learning loss is a part of over-imagined education, because we know that every single summer, students lose up to two months of learning in reading and English, and two and a half months in math. But what is even more startling is, when you look at the years of summer learning loss between pre-K and sixth grade, it is said that a student can lose up to two years of learning in both reading and math by the time they get to the sixth grade, if there's not a lot of intentionality around supporting summer learning loss. So today's gathering for me is one that certainly inspires my spirit about what is to come and what is possible, um, as we continue this partnership to make sure that Des Moines Public Schools, when we reimagine education, we're gonna get back to that place of preeminence amongst not only public schools, but school systems in general. Um, indulge me if I may, Madam Chair, you did not get a cheer, but one of our pride points here in terms of achievement is that our five comprehensive high schools outperform in terms of growth every other high school in the metro area. And we should have that on a couple of billboards, so probably need to sort of plug that in my head. Those are the things that we're not talking a lot about, and reimagining education would only metastasize that kind of achievement. So, thank you again, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for having us today.
Thanks, and I'll just add that I think Matt and Scott- And I'll just add that I think Matt and Scott have already started understanding, trying to understand future trends, right, in development, and how that may overlay and impact how the team's thinking about facilities. And so, I think it was an initial conversation, but I think those are slated to continue.
Yeah. Each previous presentation is actually wrapped up and included in reimagining education, so it's super, super fitting.
Questions?
Does anyone have any comments? If not, I think there's some points that maybe Jackie and I, and we can all get together, and we can meet as a council, what we think we could maybe start collaborating more on, some areas that we can look more into, maybe form some committees to work on, even as your reimagined Step Two, maybe have more input. So, we can gather afterwards. I know it's pretty much at the time, but we can have more input together, conversations, and definitely will be meeting again. So, I think this has been good, because I think it showcases how we all benefit when we all work together. So, if, Chris, I think you were going to ...
I would just like to suggest one way that we collaborate and bring people together that are interested. Thanks. I'd like to suggest one way that we collaborate and bring people together that are interested. I think we all share a common value that we want our kids, and our community, and our schools safe. It's disheartening to see, you know, kids being hurt this, this week we lost four kids that should be in our Des Moines Public Schools, three of them, you know, over the lunch hour, when they should have been in school, racing through our streets. I think there's ways that we can prioritize safety, and we probably all have opinions about it. I would like to see a growing relationship between our police department and Des Moines Public Schools. I think we had a very successful run with the school resource officers, and I would like that to be on the table of things that we talk about. In the years since that program was canceled, we have a lot of data since then, and I think it would be worthy of some conversations about how we partner, both to protect our kids today, but also creating the right relationships between the police and our students in ways that build a safer community over the generations to come.
I think that would be one point, too, to understand what the district is doing to, and the relationship that has been rebuilt, I would say. And so, to find out, and we could maybe have that come to the council, on what is actually going on in the buildings, so, and then work to build even a greater relationship.
Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments, too. Thank you for bringing this back together. I understood when I was campaigning that council used to get together with the school district in a public basis like this, and it hasn't happened for a while, so thank you. I would echo Chris's comments about public safety. And another thing that I just noted that came up in the first three presentations, Ben Page with Parks, Early Childhood, and Libraries. Ben Page started out the conversation by talking about two impediments for young people participating in sports. One was cost. We saw that. The other he mentioned was transportation. Early Childhood talked about transportation as being an impediment. Libraries talked about transportation as being an impediment. So, we need to bring DART into this conversation in some form or fashion while they're talking about, I should say "we," because we're part of DART. The regional system talks about reimagining. They need to be at the table to help solve that issue.
I just want to make sure, I'll ask our school board colleagues, is there anything you want to lift up as something you identified as a high priority? I think I've heard safety and transportation as two issues. Anything else that you want to be sure to elevate?
Housing is always an issue for families, and definitely transportation, so I would love to have more discussions around that.
Scott?
One thing that came to mind for me as we listened to the presentations was really the work being done in DNPS around work-based learning and career readiness versus just college readiness. And I think there's some neat things happening, particularly in the trades with DNPS, that might be really neat collaboration opportunities specifically for the neighborhood revitalization in the housing space. There's just a lot of natural synergy there, so I'd love to explore how DNPS students can have exposure to career readiness within the district as well.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And Mayor Bozen, before we close up, if it's okay, I think I'm going to ask Dr. Roberts, just to speak, touch on quickly, how positive we feel about our relationship with DNPD, just quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Coleman and Simonson, for really highlighting the importance of DNPS prioritizing safety. It is one of those areas of our pursuit around daily operational excellence that we spend a lot of time on. And I'm happy to report that while we have discontinued SRO program, we have a really strong and healthy relationship with the Des Moines Police Department. It's one that we truly value. And I know that you referenced that, and yes, as a data-driven organization, we are continuously looking at and exploring data, including the trend data, about what has occurred since we have won, been intentional around strengthening our relationships with DNPD, and no longer having SROs, but a really grown and fastly improving public safety system. We've seen all of the data points around student out-of-school suspensions, incidents around discipline, all going in the right direction. But there's always room for us to grow around making sure that we strengthen our relationships. And while at this point, we do not necessarily have an appetite to pursue the SRO program, I think your point around putting it back on the table always bodes well for discussions, right? But I know that there is no data that suggests, either locally or nationally, that having the presence of school resource offices and buildings reduces incidents of discipline or has a negative impact on school violence. But I think I appreciate the offering, and we should probably have a discussion about it.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. Transportation safety, that is one of my main priorities. I would like to take, thank the city councilmen for what they've done on the east side of Des Moines. It looks like we're going to get another Hawk Light by Hyatt Middle School, which is way overdue. So, conversations about, along with transportation, even making it walkable for our students. I know City's been doing a lot of stuff with the sidewalk, Vision Zero with Carl. So, I think that, just bringing that into light more for those tools to get in the same bandwagon.
We want to thank Linda for her efforts, what she did on the Hawk Lights and Carl, too, for that area of the town.
Wonderful.
Anybody else have anything?
I think what we've talked about is, we'd like to do this on a more regular basis. And so, it's, I think, up to the superintendent and Scott and Mayor Bozen and I to think through a good cadence, where we can come together and also allow for board members to go off separately and work on things in small groups.
Especially with, you know, we have at-large, too, and we have, you have districts, we have wards, that we can work more collaborative together, I think, and just have meetings so that you, everybody understands the needs of their direct communities. So, again, I can't thank everyone enough for coming. Thank you for the ones that are distant, some very far away, who called in. And thanks to all the staff that took the time to put together the presentations.
Great job.
And being here, because it truly does take all of us working together to continue to make this a city people want to live, work, and play in, so.
Thank you, everybody.
Great job.
And I think we all should thank the mayor and the chair for bringing us together. I think this conversation is really important to continue on an ongoing basis. I'm glad we did this. And so, thank you for taking the leadership to make this happen.
Thank you. Everybody have a great evening. Thanks for being here. What was that?